Come on up, Dean.
Mr. Mayor, council members, appreciate your time this evening for this presentation. My name's Dean Harrell. Do you need my address or anything on this particular?
You're good.
This is a particular project located at the intersection of Fincher Road and Potter Road in Indian Trail. Let me see if I can figure this thing out with a little bit of a overview of the site plan. So this concept has gone through several different renderings, and the latest and greatest is what you see here, which is a total of 180 units proposed of townhomes, all brick, and about 16,000 square foot of retail, the intersection of Fincher and Potter. I think one of the most important things here is probably the product type. This is a few examples of existing conditions. There are some rental houses on the property currently. So we thought about what kind of a high-end product can we put here? And the reason we came up with this is during the construction of the hospital, this plan was presented about two years ago now, I believe, and we had several of the emergency room technicians, the traveling nurses, the in-house nurses and the doctors wanted a hiring product in the area and not more than 10 minutes from the hospital. Now, 10 o'clock in the morning, you can be at the hospital in less than 10 minutes, but at 8 o'clock, it's probably going to take you 12, 15 minutes with the traffic. This is a product that is in Belmont. It's called Brookline Product. It is all brick. This particular product that you see here is curb park, and we don't particularly like that for safety, just because of kids running in and out between the bumpers of the cars. So if we're successful in moving forward with this, I'll keep in mind that we will have a front-leaded, one-car garage door in front of these units. They are brick all the way around. The only, you see just a little bit of hardy board siding for a different texture on the right-hand side, and then the only vinyl on it is the soffits for maintenance. Another view, so this comes in four, six, and eight units to the building. It is different textures of brick, and you see the architecture tries to be just a little bit different on each one, has a nice curb appeal to it, different angle. Those are actually two separate buildings, not one long building in this particular. You can see how this is part curb park, and again, we don't particularly like that because of the safety issue. But we, this particular product sells between $400,000 and $450,000, depending on the options, so an average of about $425,000. That cost is typically going up every day. It's not that the units are changing or the interiors are changing, it's just development costs and labor and materials every day seems to be caught up in inflation. Typical rendering of the retail product that we propose on the corner would be two separate buildings, just nice clean lines, a little architecture thrown in there, and this would be for community support, like maybe a sub-shop, or a pizza, or nail salon, similar things that supports the neighborhood. On amenities, we have a site here. This is a cabana structure, timber-framed cabana structure with a fireplace for meetings, family picnics whatsoever, and these will have outside grills, commercial grills attached to this structure. Pool structure is simple. It's a cabana with a fireplace that has a men's room and a women's room and dressing areas within it. It's not a full-fledged clubhouse whatsoever, typically due to when you have a full-fledged clubhouse, that goes back into your homeowners association dues, and we're trying to flex that and keep it down as much as possible. Serpentine pool, kidney-shaped pool, whatever you want to call it, will be in front of the cabana. There's a trail system completely all the way around the site. This site does back up to a neighborhood contiguous to the back of the property. There's a 50-foot minimum buffer, but in some cases, in many of the areas, that buffer becomes 100-foot due to some wetlands in the area. But there would be numerous exercise stations throughout the walking trail. These seem to work well in other communities. You know, a lot of these folks are into CrossFit, like to walk these trails and then know where their stations are and have the workout that they require. Get back to the site plan. Again, the product. And if you have any questions, we will give you a few of the stats on this. Required parking for the entire site, including the retail, is 515 spaces. We have 538, so we have approximately 23 extra spaces. The build-out of 180 units at $425,000, that totals about $76,500, tax-based, in Indian Trail, and the retail is about $4 million in build-out, so for a total of $80,500. And I'll be glad to take any questions you may have on it.
Anybody have any questions? No questions? Okay. Well, Dean, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And appreciate you doing that presentation and...
Appreciate you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
With that being said, I'd like to close the special meeting. Can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close special meeting.
All in favor? Unanimous. Three minutes. Stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, free, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
If we'd all remain standing for a moment of silence. I'd like to welcome everybody. I'm glad you're here on this. Did it get 90 degrees today? Or come close to it, didn't it? It, I saw on my car, it was 93 at one time, so I don't know. And I wasn't here today. I started my day out in Myrtle Beach, believe it or not, and worked my way back up this way. I'd like to tell you a little bit about some upcoming events. Thursday, it says, okay, excuse me, Thursday, 5/6, Hits After 6 at Chestnut Square Park, lasts from 6:00 to 9:00. If you've not been to, and who's the band this time?
Dueling Pianos.
Oh, Dueling Pianos. Now, that's a treat. Dueling Pianos would be a real treat. I've seen them before, and man, it's a good time. I guess if I'd have kept reading, it says featuring Dueling Pianos, I would have got that. You control the songs that are played. You've got a bounce house, face painting, yard games, beer and food trucks. We have a blood drive at Town Hall on 5/23 at 9:00 a.m., lasts till 1:30 p.m. Folks will need to register at the redcrossblood.org. Monday, 5/29, Memorial Day Ceremony at Town Hall, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Join together as the Town of Indian Trail gathers to honor and remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. And we do that every year, and it's wonderful. With that being said, let's move down to the litter sweep.
Mr. Mayor, before we do the litter sweep, I've been told that Memorial Day this year, the VFW has offered to host it, so we'll be having it at the VFW. So I apologize that that message was not conveyed earlier to you.
Well, okay. There's no problem. Trina and I had this conversation, and I guess it, I thought, I told Trina, I thought it was going at VFW, but anyway.
We can see their...
It's not your fault, Trina. It's what you were told, so.
We can see their new roof and other improvements.
Okay, that's good. It's at the VFW. I apologize. All right, now for the litter sweep. Are litter sweep people here yet? Or, oh, there you are. So we have Lisa, is it Ferraro? Ferrero? Okay. And we got Catherine Mask in the back, Clarence, also Brooks, and Adam. Where's Adam? Rodney's not here today, is he? But anyway, if you would stand up, I would like for you to stand up, and everybody look around. And these are the people that come out and volunteer, and give them a good hand. Oh, and Mike, Mike, stand up. Mike, also, Mike's always here. And I came off, but anyway. We have a good time, and thank you for what you do. It's very nice, and you, I believe, were here the last time we did it also, and we have a good time. We eat breakfast, we, you know, walk around and pick up trash, and just have somebody to talk to, and it helps the town. It really does. And I just really, really, really appreciate y'all coming. I wish more people would have showed up. I believe we had 18 people here doing it, and boy, we can cover a street in just not too long, can't we, Mike? It's, I enjoy it. I actually enjoy it. Thanks again for coming, and thank you for everything that you do. I'd also like to mention, too, and I just got a memo last night on this. Last night, I got a memo from Board Member Gary Side, sent me something, and we had two teachers from Indian Trail. One won the, no, one won the Principal of the Year, and the other one won the Teacher of the Year. I believe it's Dr. Fasien of Porter Ridge High School is the Principal of the Year, and Ms. Nicole Branhorst is the Elementary Beginning Teacher of the Year. I'd love to have them come, council, if we could, to a June meeting, and us give them something for it, because I'll tell you this, there's, the teaching profession is, my wife's a teacher, so I sympathize with a lot of them. They work hard, and especially people who do such a good job and love their children, so I think it'd be great to honor them, so we'll...
The Principal of the Year.
Pronounce her last name for me.
Fasien.
Fasien?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do you know, you probably know her, don't you?
She's the principal, my other senior year.
Okay, okay, very good. Well, we'll have them here in June, if we can, Trina. Okay, that brings us to additions and deletions. Can I get a, does anybody have any addition or deletions? Or can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right, comes to presentations. We have new businesses, Pet Passages. Mr. Sam Johnson, Sam, come on up. And Sam's also, what is your title at the VFW? Chief, or what?
At the VFW, I'm just a member at the VFW, but I was blessed, I'm still in the Marine Corps, I'm a Lieutenant Colonel in the United States Marine Corps Reserves.
That's right, okay. I thought you were, are you in the VFW?
I am, and I do want to just say to the council, thank you very much for the support that you've given, VFW 2423. It is a benchmark for other posts across the nation, how we can interact with our local communities and how we can do better.
Well, I want to tell you something. I don't know if you know these guys did that this week or not, but they went over to an old graveyard on 74 Saturday, and I went over and I met them, and unfortunately, I had another commitment to make, but the next time, I'll go back with them, because they said they're not done with it. But that's the kind of VFW that we have, that they go to, this graveyard, I went actually and took pictures of it the day before, and it was quite fascinating. We're talking 1800s, people, from early 1800s and 1800s. It was, and it was all grown up, and they were out there working hard to clean it up, and hopefully, I'll get out there to help them the next time they're out there working on it.
Everyone's invited.
That's right, that's right. Well, thank you. Well, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I thank you, council, especially Council Member Barber, for this invite. I am blessed to have opened a new business here in Union County, specifically off 74. If we, you all remember that white building that was vacant for forever. I finally took over that building right there across the street from Sonic, and we have opened Pet Passages. We are a pet funeral home and pet cremation service, so we are here to help those families that are grieving the loss of their loved ones and make it as bearable as possible. So we love for the business and here to support the town as well as the residents.
Very good. And you were telling me a little bit about it. Anybody have any questions? You were telling me a little bit about it earlier, and I found that pretty fascinating.
Yeah, yeah, so more than 80% of all households have pets now, and that's even gone up with COVID. And as we know, that it's a part that people don't realize, it's like, oh, well, my vet handled it. Well, your vet never handles the aftercare. They always contract with a cremation or a funeral home service, and that's the biggest thing, is so people know that, you know, pets are just as much, I have a therapy dog, and he and she's just as much a part of my life as my family, and it will be devastating when I lose her, but I have that right to choose the service. We're also a much more cost-effective option for a lot of families. We have services as less as $65, and then, you know, can go up from there. But we're here, again, to make sure people know they have a choice and love the community. I live in the community, even though I have a Matthew's address. The mayor informed me last Memorial Day that even though I have a Matthew's address, I do indeed live in Indian Trail. So we're just going to get those roads fixed, but I think I know a few people.
Very good. Do you remember how I told you to look?
I don't.
Garbage can. It's a garbage can. It's a garbage can, and it'll tell you where you live. So anyway, well, thank you so much. Thank you for being here. We have something here for you, and if council, anybody wants to come down here and have their picture made with Sam, come on down.
Picture made with Sam. Did you go ahead, then?
No, come on, come on. You invited him.
I guess we as well.
Don't spend it all in one place. Don't take it out of the front.
Break glass in case of emergency.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to Public Works Week proclamation, and I'd like to read this. Proclamation for National Public Works Week, adopted 5/9/23. Whereas public works, professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustain and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people in Town of Indian Trail. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, employees, at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our town streets, sidewalks, buildings, parks, streetlights, stormwater, and solid waste collection. And whereas it is the public interest for the citizens, civil leaders, and children of Town of Indian Trail to gain knowledge of and to maintain progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association, be it now. Whereas this year marks our seventh year that the town has taken part in the National Public Works Week, sponsored by American Public Works Association, with the theme Connecting the World Through Public Works this year. Now therefore, I, David Cone, Mayor of Indian Trail, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 21, 2023 through May 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week. In the Town of Indian Trail, I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, to recognize in the contributions which public works officials makes every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, giving my hand and the seal of the Town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, on the ninth day of May, 2023. Adam, would you like to come up here and let me just know you don't want to come up here? And Adam is our, is head of public works here, and not Adam, and I know it's just more than you, but let me just, I'm going to come up there and hand this to you and shake your hand, because I think, I think you're marvelous at what you do, and y'all handle this very well. Okay, now we're going to talk about some grand marshal nominees for the July 4 parade. I'd like to, Hayden, would you like to come up?
I would love to come up. Mayor, council, how are you all this evening?
Doing well.
Good, that's what we like to hear. So I come before you to talk about the grand marshal for the July 4 parade. As you know, we are honored to work with the Indian Trail Lions Club, and they are the ones responsible for submitting up to three names for the grand marshal. The policy reads that you will receive the names in the first meeting of May, and then come the second meeting of May, you will take those nominations and select one of them. So this evening, we would like to present three names from the Indian Trail Lions Club, the first being Olivia Reardon. She's the amazing fifth-grade student from Indian Trail Elementary School who beat cancer after going through 66 rounds of chemotherapy. Second, we have Scout Leader Dave Corral from Boy Scout Troop 276. I think we're all familiar with the Boy Scout on Indian Trail Road. And then finally, we have VFW member Mr. Smith as well.
Hayden, we were trying to get that name, and just finally got an answer from the VFW. I'm not sure where his name came up, but I don't think there's, that it would be appropriate. He may have passed away or whatever. So we'd like to substitute the honor guard from the VFW as a group.
That sounds fantastic as well.
Okay, thank you.
So these are the three nominees. I can answer any questions that you may have. If I don't have an answer, we can follow back. If not, we will see you the second meeting in May.
Okay, do we have anybody, does anybody have anybody else that they want to put up?
Yeah. I think Pastor Mike Whitson from the First Baptist of Indian Trail, he's had 40 years of service to the community of Indian Trail, and that's remarkable. So I'd like to throw in his name on that also, please.
Mayor, if I can, this is your meeting. As the policy reads and as it was adopted by council, the nominations are to come from the civic organizations, both the Lions Club and Rotary Club, and then council is to choose from those. So if you are to put in another nomination from the hat, I just want you to know you're going outside of policy, and if you need to suspend the rules, I wanted to make sure that you're aware and we do it appropriately.
Okay, well, I apologize for doing that.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, I thought we had done it in years past, but I apologize for that. So anyway, we can, we'll take these names and we'll come up with some other, okay? All right, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
It brings us up to our quarterly financial review. Jim, if you'd like to step up and...
Good evening. Good to be in front of you again. It's been a while. I'll be brief. I know Mike's got a good presentation coming up on the budget, but again, what I'm going to take you through is the nine months, our third quarter, actual results, and this is part of what we plug into the budget as well. We use the running rates, et cetera. So second slide, Bobby. So I'm going to start with revenues. Of course, taxes at Valorem, we budget at 96%, and you can see, we've already collected 105%. So people in Indian Trail pay their taxes, so thank you. Appreciate that. And I'm from a city up north where that wasn't always the case, so we are bust down here. People pay their taxes. So you can see, we're doing great on at Valorem. We budget 96. Last year, she collected 99.87. So we feel very, I'll take you through sales tax. Now, sales tax, that's eight months' worth of information. We've already busted through the budget, eight months through. It's really a good story. We're finally getting our fair share from Union County, as far as I'm concerned. Now, the star this year is, I'm going to take you down to investment earnings. Now, last year, the star was Ms. Brandy in planning. This year, and I can't take much credit for it, although Mike and I do spend time making sure our funds are in the right place to get safe and earning interest. You can see, we budgeted $45,000, came in nine months, we're at $650,000. So revenues are strong. We're already at 99%, eight months through. I'm going to move now to expenses. Now, again, we meet every quarter. Mike, Senior Accountant, Alicia Caddis back there, we meet with every department, so we find out at that point if there's an issue. And you'd be surprised, you can tackle it then without anything lapsing. It makes a lot more sense. Our department heads are diligent. Now, we send a letter out at the end of this month, only essential spending, so we don't want people buying pens and paper just to spend their budget, so we ensure the only essential spending. Essential spending might be if Adam hires somebody new, he's got to have a coat, uniform. So I want you to know you're in good hands there. Thank you, Bobby. Community and development, we budgeted, no, same screen. We had budgeted $150,000, fourth one, fifth one down. We've only spent $30,000 there, so there's $120,000 available there, Marcus. I think the $30,000 was spent for retail strategies, Mike? Engineering, we had budgeted $1 million to pay for our third installment of Old Monroe Road. We were able to defer that another year, so that money sat in the bank, earning interest. We'll make our third installment next year. We're on schedule. The money is in the bank for, well, next solid waste, Adam is on top of that. You can see, we're at 64%, eight months through. That's ahead of schedule. 344 new accounts have been added for the year, so. Then contingency, second from the bottom, that's $250,000 in case for a rainy day, if we need it. We haven't touched it in the last three years, but it's there if we need it for some purpose. So again, I leave you with, they were in good financial shape through nine months, and I know Mike's got a good, strong budget presentation to come. Any questions?
Any questions for Jim? Jim, thank you. Mike, come up with a formal budget presentation, please, sir.
Before I start through this slideshow, I want to run through a few comments that might be helpful to kind of set the stage for our budget presentation. It is that time of year. And it's my pleasure to work with you for yet another year to present the FY '24 budget. As you know, our fiscal year starts July 1 through June 30. And part of the process is that the manager will work with his or her staff to develop a budget, so what you will see tonight is the manager's recommended budget. We have had two meetings before this where we looked at our estimated revenues, estimated expenses. We talked about the direction we were going. We did that on March 23, and then in April, we did the same thing. The budget that I have for you tonight, we keep the tax rate at 18.5 cents. As I look over my time with you, I'm approaching my three-year mark. My three-year mark will be at the end of August, and I've been really impressed with the work that this town has done over the last several years. We have updated, and I say we, I mean you, the staff and myself, have all worked together to update the UDO, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We're currently updating our downtown master plan and our pedestrian plan, and next fiscal year, we'll update our transportation plan. These are all key items that you hear about on a daily basis. These plans, collectively within their self-respective discipline, can be a great blueprint of how the town can work to meet the future, and when you take these plans together, it allows you the opportunity to coordinate projects, seek grant opportunities, and make funding decisions on a strategic basis. You've also... You've also approved a five-year capital improvement plan, and what that has allowed you to do is look into the future, see what your needs are, and then see how we want to fund those needs. And as I walk through the presentation tonight, we're gonna walk through those projects together and show you where your money and the taxpayers' money is coming from. You've also been successful in getting money from CRTPO. The latest has been roughly six hundred thousand dollars, and the General Assembly awarded you with ten million, three hundred thousand dollars to look at three projects. We have gone through COVID. We have been able to recruit very talented and retain very talented people, and we'll have a presentation here in the next meeting or so where you can meet some of our newer employees. And so we're continuing to move the city forward. One thing that I'm very excited about, and you've heard me say it till I'm blue in the face, is we've got a lot of road projects, and no one will be more excited in this town than I will be when we start to see the bulldozers start to move dirt. And every day, we're getting closer and closer and closer to that day. Probably a week doesn't go by that I'm not in Todd Unsinger's office asking, where's the bulldozers? Where's the bulldozers? One of the other things we have worked on is trying to reach out to our investors, which would be our citizens and our business folks. Through the budget process, you've allowed us to create such publications and fund such activities through the Park and Recreation Department. We put out our program guide to over fourteen thousand people. We do the monthly newsletter, the managers' report, managers' meeting summary, Facebook Live, and Coffee with the Mayor. We're doing everything that we can to let the public know what we're doing with their money. In your budget book, you should all have a book like this, or several documents I would like you to look at tonight, is, it contains several important documents that you need to be aware of. One will be a budget ordinance, and this budget ordinance is what we will ask you to approve on June thirteenth. You will also see in there a list of spreadsheets which contains not only the revenues, the estimated revenues, and the estimated expenditures. And we, we chart that from FY twenty-one through FY twenty-four, which is the upcoming budget year. For your information only, we will also have in there a number of capital project ordinances and grant ordinances. If you remember our discussion previously, a grant ordinance or a capital project ordinance survives after June thirtieth. It runs for the length of the grant or the project, but that's in there for your information only. You'll also see some information about a micro purchase threshold from thirty thousand to fifty thousand, which is very important as we talk about these upcoming construction projects that we're working on, and we'll ask for your approval on June thirteenth. You'll also find a proposed pay plan. That's one of the other things that, that you approve when you approve the budget. You'll note in the pay plan that there are several positions that we have in there that are not funded, that are not part of our organizational chart, but we're in the final steps of an updated comprehensive study, and so as the town grows and, and starts to change, then those positions are in there if you ever need them. You'll also see an organizational chart, and then the other thing you'll be asked to approve on June thirteenth is the fee structure. So let's go to the slideshow, and as I go through it, if there's any questions, don't hesitate to stop me, ask the question. If I can't answer it, I'm sure Jim can. If neither of us can answer it, then we will get back with you. Three things we want to talk about is, one is our financial condition, and we want to hit the proposed budget highlights and then talk about our next steps moving forward. Jim has already talked about it. We live in a great area of the state. Crystal and I were at the league conference two, three weeks ago, and people could not believe that we have an eighteen and a half cent tax rate. I talked to a mayor up near Raleigh, and while our one penny here yields five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in their town, and this is just north of Raleigh, so it surprises me, only yields fifty-eight thousand. So you're in an area of a very strong economy. People do pay their taxes here, and if they have problems, then we work out payment plans with them. The council has done a number of smart things in the past, and you continue to do smart things, and we'll talk about that when we talk about the five cent that we put aside, and also when we talk about how we've handled our ARPA money that we received. Prudent budget, proactive stewardship by town employees. You heard Jim say just a few minutes ago, we tell people just because you have in the budget doesn't give you a green light to spend it. If you need it, get it, but don't just spend it because you've got it. Particularly as we start to wind down the year, that becomes more and more important because we recognize that we need to be responsible not only to you, but to the forty thousand citizens out there. You know about the AAA bond rating? This is something that I carry with pride. You have not had that before. Did you hear what I said? You have not had that before, and when we went to sell the street bonds, you timed it perfectly. We got the AAA rating while the interest rate was at the bottom of the scale, which meant when we sold those street bonds, we were paying the least possible interest around. And now that the interest rate has started to creep up, our idle funds are now earning interest. So you, you called it on both ends of the scale. You should be commended for that. You know, every year, we have the auditor come, and she's very strict in what she does. The state treasurer is very strict in making sure that local governments meet the letter and spirit of the law, and if there's anything out of kilter with our audit, our auditor will bring it to your attention. There were a couple of very minor things last year that we took care of, but we have what we call an unmodified audit. And what that means is that you can trust the numbers at the audit that the auditor has reported to you, and that audit is kind of like a report card as to how you were doing on June thirtieth at the end of your fiscal year and how your internal controls are. These are all things that tie into your financial condition. We have a growing tax base. We have two charts here. One is what the value of the taxable property in the town was from twenty twenty to FY twenty-four. Now, just to remind you, we get that figure from the county tax assessor every, has of January first, but we don't get those figures until early April. That's why we couldn't give you the, the latest figures at our March meeting. You see the figure on the right? That's when they did the reevaluation. It says thirty-five percent, and I can tell you that not everybody's property necessarily went up the same percentage. Some people's property went up more, some people's property went up less percentage, but I think the overall figure reported by the Union County Tax Assessor was about thirty-five percent. We estimate a three percent tax growth in our tax base on a year-by-year basis. This year, it was four point eight one. Some of you have asked me about our unassigned fund balance, our sales tax, I mean our savings account, if you will, and how it's grown over the years. And as of July first, two thousand twenty-two, we had eighteen million, nine hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. Sounds like a lot of money, and it is, but if you remember last fall, we engaged in some, some very proactive discussion on how we want to handle some of our road projects, both road maintenance and long-term highway projects such as Indian Trail Road, Chestnut Parkway, and others. You'll remember Indian Trail Road Phase One, which runs from Liberty to Gribble, we're using CARPO money and we're using federal money. And what that means is, on those particular projects, we have to pay the money upfront and then get reimbursed by the state or federal government. If you remember, we did the roundabout near the school right after I got here, and it was a year or so before we got our money, but we had to pay for it upfront. Our total assessment is six billion, one hundred twenty-nine million, six hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars with an estimated collection rate of ninety-six percent, which would yield five, five billion, eight hundred forty-four million, six, four sixty-nine, twenty-seven dollars. One penny yields five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. Sorry, I'm not used to saying, yes, sir.
Just back to the unassigned fund balance for a second.
Yes.
Yeah, same, same slide. What you're saying is that based on the road projects that this council has approved...
Yep.
...in twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, our fund balance will be reduced to about thirty percent of what it is now.
Yes, sir.
All right. Just want to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
And we underline that and bold to let you know that we talked about it last fall. We've talked about this fund balance. We're not hoarding the money. It is planned for some capital investments. You know that we've also talked about a public works facility, and I'll get into that in just a few minutes, where you've committed six and a half million, and we think that it's gonna take more than that once we get to it. So we wanted to, to let you know that. Good, good point, Mr. Mike Kattar. Okay, let's go back. I know some of you may be tired of seeing this slide right here, but I think it's very important because we've anchored the budget around these nine priorities, and these are the things that, that you have said are very important to you, and I'm sure these are the things that you've heard from your citizens. Roads, roads, roads. Not only roads that are existing need to be repaired, but we need some new roads and better roads. Public safety, planning. If I hear it once a week, I hear it three times a week. How do you handle all the growth that's coming in here? Creating a downtown where you have energy, where you have people gather together for activities and events. High-quality team. Y'all have been very good to us, and we certainly appreciate it, staff, the support that you've given us on, on compensation and training and things like that. It makes a difference. We're an employer where people come and they want to stay here. Partnerships, we've worked very well on some projects with the county that you know about. Our parks were known for our parks. I saw an article in the Charlotte Observer last week where people talked about going to Indian Trail and how good our parks were. We've got great parks here, but we need more. And then just basic service, picking up the garbage for the fourteen thousand, five hundred customers that we do every week. And of course, operational needs. We're not exempt from getting hit with ransomware or malware, and so we've reached a point where we have to keep, not only with our vendor, but in-house folks, to keep a close eye and make sure that our technology and our buildings are secure. All right. When we talk about the town budget, a lot of people think about the town's money or the county money, maybe like you do your own checkbook. There's one account, all the money, there's a checking and a savings. All the money goes in one account and comes out the same account. As we've talked about on a number of occasions, public sector accounting is complicated on a, on a good day because you have different sources of revenue with different limitations coming in at different times, and it has to be managed. We have several major accounts. One is stormwater. We estimate this year's budget to be two million, one hundred, two thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. We're recommending that stormwater fees remain the same, and those funds can only be used for stormwater-related activities. You remember you approved a contract to have a watershed study done. It should be done by the summertime, and that will give you a blueprint on some of the projects you need to take on. It is a good fund, but I can tell you, when you start to get into stormwater work, you can run through a million dollars pretty darn quick. Power bill money. Every time you go to buy gas, part of that goes to the power bill. Only cities in North Carolina get power bill money because in North Carolina, counties don't do roads, only the state or the city, and that's based on the number of miles that you're maintaining as of July first. You remember last fall, we gave you a history of the town's maintenance of the town streets. Ten years or so ago, when we got into this business, we had basically eight miles of streets. Now we have eighty, and we expect that number to grow. A few years ago, two thousand eight, two thousand and nine, they were patching potholes, from what I've been told. Now you're starting to build streets. It's a whole new level. When I get on in the PowerPoint a little bit more, we'll talk about some of the things we're doing on road maintenance and how we're leveraging the power bill so that we get the most of our power bill going directly into the tar and asphalt. I mentioned earlier that the town has done some, some pretty smart things, and, wait a minute, let me back up. We are missing a slide, Bobby. Whoop, back up. That's the one I'm looking for. Should be. It is. It is on, should be, it's general fund. I'm sorry. I apologize for that. I mentioned we have four different funds. We've already talked about the stormwater and power bill. We also have our general fund, and that's what I'm gonna spend most of the time talking about tonight. The general fund controls the day-to-day operation of the town. It supports the power bill to pay these lights, it supports the streetlights, it supports the majority of the employees' salary, benefits, your stipend, et cetera, et cetera. That is funded through the property tax, the sales tax, permits, rentals, and other things that go on. I mentioned earlier tonight that this council has done some pretty smart things, and Mr. Mayor, I think you may have been on the council when this occurred, where you agreed to take five cent of the tax rate and you put it into a debt service slash capital reserve. That has served you very well. It has allowed you to make a disciplined effort to start to save money for some of your capital projects. Our debt, we estimate that that will draw two million, nine hundred forty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars this coming fiscal year. You have a debt service payment of one million, nine hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars coming up for the next year, which will leave you about a million, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars for any additional capital projects that are not currently funded. Now, you think that our debt is a lot. It's not. Under North Carolina law, a city can take up to eight percent of its tax base as for its limit on its debt. I think we're like three percent of one percent of the total debt. Our debt compared to what we could take on doesn't even hit a blip on the radar. And again, it's because you have saved, you have disciplined, and when you did sell bonds, you sold them right at the right time. Okay, let's continue on. The other thing that y'all did and should be taking credit for and was very smart was we got about twelve million dollars in ARPA money. There was some discussion about moving forward quickly. We delayed, and it was a good thing we delayed because as we moved quickly, we could have only taken a fifty thousand dollar deduction, but because we waited to after that April first deadline, it was no April Fools, we get a ten million dollar standard deduction, a difference of nine million, five hundred thousand dollars. So what does that mean? What that means is that allowed us to use those federal funds, or what I call Washington dollars, that has a number of strings attached, to pay the sheriff's contract. So we paid the sheriff's contract last year, we're paying it this year, and we'll have some money left over next year. So that money that was freed up, we call that surplus funds, okay? There's no limit on when we spend that because the money that we use, the federal funds that had the strings... that had the strings, we did it for the sheriff's office, and it worked out well. The other portion of our Washington money, or our federal money, will be on some stormwater So if you remember, what we did this year is we made the first payment of three ladder trucks. And we did a whole lot of good in the community by working with the Council of Aging, working with the Lions Club, the Rotary, uh, Community Heart, and the list goes on and on. And so, um, we have spent up all that money this year. Number of you were at Cameron's House, House of Hope and some of the ribbon cuttings, you remember that? And the community was very appreciative. So let's look at, um, twenty twenty-four. How much money do we have to work with? And I've got Adam in the back, and if I start to make a mistake, I'm going to ask Adam to correct me. All right, you got about four point two million dollars, if you add interest of quarter of a million dollars, and then subtract out your obligated funds, and those obligated funds will be payments for the ladder truck, and we're going to spend about two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars and some change over the town building that we own that houses the sheriff's office. We call it the sheriff's office facility. Um, you come up with two point three million, so you've got available two point one million and some change. Moving forward to FY twenty-five, next year at this time, the fire trucks would have been paid for, they would have been delivered, the fire trucks were in our name. Um, the last, uh, the only obligation we have right now is for a second phase of the facility upgrade over that facility in the amount of two hundred and eighty, uh, one hundred and eighty-two thousand. Uh, the ARPA committee has worked hard, they should be commended for the strategic approach that they've taken. Uh, they've taken a very complicated project and, um, given you some really good options to look at, and I think you've spent the money very well. I mentioned earlier that we have received money from the North Carolina General Assembly in the amount of ten million, three hundred thousand. We got that last year, and we're putting that money to work. Shady Bluff, right behind us, which will create connectivity with the park and give that crowded park another way to get in and out. We're spending nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we're spending five million on Indian Trail Road Phase Two to look at burying the utilities. Indian Trail Road Phase One will be a, a showstopper once it, when it is completed. And we have budgeted two million for Indian Trail Road Phase Two. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going across the street for Chestnut Park Phase Two, and the fifty thousand will be for wayfinding signs. Proposed operating budget, twenty-one million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and two dollars, maintaining the eighteen and a half cent. If you had a house in Indian Trail valued at two hundred seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, your town tax would be five hundred and four dollars and ninety-six cent. The stormwater fee is proposed, remain flat, and the impervious surface is two thousand sixty feet, not twenty-six hundred feet. We will update that slide and get you a, a corrected slide. That was brought to our attention this afternoon about five o'clock. So what are we paying? We pay the eighteen and a half cent. What are we getting for it? We're getting zoning and planning, and you've seen some of the good work that they're doing, some of the studies they're doing for you. You've got engineering, we have our folks out on First Avenue every day, looking at projects, working on projects, trying to move them forward. The tax and finance, I frequently talk to people that come in our lobby, that talk to our tax folks, and I have never heard a complaint about anyone being rude or not being receptive to try to help someone. With the public outreach, we've already talked about, and then the technology, we're constantly improving the technology. We've got cameras and Wi-Fi's in the park, we're upgrading the cameras here, and we're going to be upgrading the security in our building. As we've seen from the news, no place is safe anymore from some deranged individual with a gun, and keeping our employees safe is job one. Uh, some of our bigger items that we look at is, of course, when you think about government, you automatically think about law enforcement. We appreciate our relationship with the county. Uh, this year, the manager's recommendation is four million, two hundred thirty-eight thousand, four hundred seventy-three. Solid waste, um, is going up, will continue to go up. In the manager's budget letter, there's some more details on that. It's budgeted this year at three million, one hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. We've got about fourteen thousand, five hundred customers every week that depends on us to get their garbage picked up. We expect another five hundred customers to be added next year at this time. Park and rec, this is probably a service that either you participate in, or you know someone who does participate. I'm amazed at the creativity of our park and rec staff, they're always coming up with stuff. And, uh, Family Fun Day's coming up next month, you've heard the mayor talk about something Thursday night, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. One of the things that's a really important priority for the, the council, and I commend you for it, is we've committed to over sixteen million dollars on street resurfacing and street maintenance over the next five years. You'll remember when we met last fall, the average score of our streets were at sixty-three, we did the computerized pavement testing. You were smart, and you said we want our streets to be an average score of eighty in five years. And so you'll see a chart that you saw last fall, which shows how we're going to pay for that. Stormwater, we spend a lot of time on stormwater. I met with a lady today who's had flooding for years, and so some of that involves, uh, creek clearing, we have a three-year contract, Adam gives you regular reports on that. So I want to be real clear on this next slide, is if you look at what does my property tax pay for, that's what it pays for. However, I want to be very transparent. You see the term ad valorem. If you were just looking at it in the ad valorem lens, real property and personal property, that would be your breakdown. But we also get money from sales tax and intergovernmental relations, so if you throw all those piles in, uh, the numbers change. Um, you see, debt service is three cent of the ad valorem, um, solid waste at five point six, uh, law enforcement is recommended, seven point nine five, and available for general use is a little over a penny. But again, that is just looking at ad valorem, it doesn't calculate the sales tax and other sources of revenue. Personnel, again, we have talked about this already, we've got three positions we're not funding this year. Um, but effective July first, we're recommending one additional deputy for the sheriff's office under the contract, also one park maintenance technician in public works. Our fields are very popular, and we have to maintain those a great deal and, and try to turn them over frequently for use. Uh, we had initially talked about bringing that person on later in the year, but, um, and further looking at it, July first is our, is better for the town. October first, I'm recommending we pick up the two traffic deputies, if you remember. Um, the captain has indicated those deputies are only restricted to traffic duties, and they've done a good job, but when we pick them up, they'll be free to do traffic and other duties. Um, one customer service position, one parks and rec specialist effective July first. We want to move IT under Abby, which would be under communications and IT. Reclassification of a tax collector to assistant finance director slash tax collector, she's doing the job right now as it is. Um, let's see. We also have, okay, yes. We also have one other position, the customer service position. I ran through that very quickly. They will be assisting the tax folks and solid waste, it will be a split position. I spoke to Lori, who is our solid waste coordinator, and she told me that her call volume is increasing daily, either from new customers or missed customers, or customers that have had trash cans, uh, taken by the garbage truck when it picks it up. Sometimes they'll pick up the garbage can and just keep driving, or sometimes they'll damage it. And sometimes we'll get calls from some of you having a problem with solid waste, so we want to be able to serve all of our citizens well. Uh, five percent COLA for personnel and council, merit zero three, adjusts the town contribution for dependents from forty-five to fifty, all other benefits remain the same. The other thing I want to mention to you is that previously, power bill funds were used to support road maintenance and equipment. Beginning twenty twenty-four, we're putting all of that towards roads, and so the general funds that we had normally charged, the, the personnel and equipment we'd normally charge to, uh, power bill are now going to general fund dollars. So as you look at those charts, you will see an increase in the facility budget and also the public works budget. We're also funding an ADA transition plan. We have to make sure that all of our facilities are adequate for ADA. If we do get a complaint under Title Six, it could create a huge liability for the town. I've already mentioned the maintenance and security. There's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that we put in for the CARPO grant, and thirty thousand for the transportation master plan. When we met last month, we were talking about the ARPA and surplus revenue, and we told you at that time what the committee had recommended is that we take the two point one million dollars and put it towards a community center. There was one suggestion, and we use the interest from the ARPA funds to support outside agencies. There's one suggestion that we put it on roads. We would recommend that you not do that right now, because we have a, a funded road program, and if you fix all your roads at one time, they're all going to wear out at one time. Uh, there was also some discussion about senior programs, those are generally done at the county level and not the, the city level. There was also discussion about using the interest that we generate from the ARPA funds to support some of the outside agencies. Not sure where the council lies with all of this, but we do need to get some direction on what you want to do with the interest, what you want to do with the two point one. You can also make it easy for yourself, is when you give us that guidance on the two point one, also give us guidance for the one point eight in FY twenty-five. That way we can take care of those two pots of money at one time and program them accordingly. We shared with you, um, the concept of having a professional lighting company to install Christmas lights and decoration across the street at the park, and we certainly appreciate that. That will save us some labor in public works, it takes them about ten days to put up the lights and take them down, and the lights we have are not as good a quality. And, uh, I want to, and there was also discussion about having decorations at Town Hall, which we agree, and so we have put some money in to that for a tree inside Town Hall, some wreaths and some other things, and have the staff to help decorate Town Hall itself. The budget continues to focus on the council's priority and meet the needs of, of the community as it grows and it changes. So let's run through the figures very quickly, I know I've taken a long time, but I feel like this is important. This is in your budget book, you see our source of revenue and where it's coming from. Our largest source is our property tax. Another source that we get, and this is common in North Carolina, is our sales tax. Because we've had a lot of online sales, it has helped our sales tax. And as you know, um, they distribute, the county distributes the sales tax, they do it one of two ways, either per Kappa or based on the ad valorem rate. They do, in Union County, they do it on the ad valorem rate. So thus Monroe and Waxall has a higher tax rate, and they get more sales tax than we do, even though we're larger than both of those cities. Uh, there's a simple bar chart, you can see how it all breaks down on the revenue side. Come over to expenditures, um, you see that, just modest increases, there is a decrease in the administration department because we were sharing an executive assistant. Um, Jim mentioned the contingency, we always put that in there in case we need that, we've been very fortunate, we haven't needed it over the last few years. Solid waste. You see where that's gone up? And I won't read all these figures out unless you want me to. You see where public works, this, this is the effect of moving our people that used to be charged to power bill over to the public works department, even though they're working on roads. Park and rec, you see that, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand. So let's talk about the capital projects. Um, the budget continues to provide funding for the complete street program. We're continuing to work with NC DOT on Chestnut Parkway, this will give you another connection, north and south. We're getting ready to start working on right-of-way for Shady Bluff. We'll be going to bid for Chestnut Square Park next month, which will include the additional parking, which solely needed, walking pass, multipurpose field with the boardwalk, and we'll continue to make headway on the public works facility. We had a meeting earlier today on, on the property that we're looking at, and I've given y'all all a very positive report on that. So this is something I mentioned a while ago, this is your road maintenance program for your town streets. This is fixing potholes, milling roads, repaving roads, and you see, we sent this to you last fall, we have some power bill fund balance, so for FY twenty-two, twenty-three, which we're getting ready to wrap up, you see where the money came from, twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, we're estimating three million, uh, one hundred fifty thousand dollars, we're going to use a, a million dollars out of power bill, another million out of power bill fund balance, that'll pretty much deplete the power bill fund balance, and five hundred thousand dollars in state funds, and six hundred and fifty thousand from capital reserve and general fund. And then you see it through the rest of the years. You'll notice in FY twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and there are no power bill fund balance, and in twenty-five through twenty-seven, there are no state funds, unless the legislature chooses to appropriate more money to us for that. Um, this chart, it's hard to read, but, but you've seen it, if you need it on a ledger-sized paper, we'll be happy to provide that to you. These are the capital projects that are currently underway. You also see the, the four or five basic steps in a road project, and you also see where that money is coming from. The key to the success of these, these projects are how we manage the flow of the funds. You heard me say earlier that in a year or so, we're going to draw down on our fund balance, uh, very, uh, directly planned, but very deep, but we're doing that for a purpose, and we're going to try to manage that flow so there's a minimum impact. We're not going to go below the thirty percent. Um, this is a little bit easier to read, and you see, these are the projects that are fully funded right now. You've approved those capital, uh, project ordinances, you may remember that. Thirty, almost thirty-six million dollars, the town has never taken on transportation projects to this scale before. This is important. It's your priority. These things take a long time to put together, and these are things that y'all have talked about for years that you have made headway to, and Tom, we're going to get, we're going to see some dirt soon, I promise you. We also have a number of sidewalks that are needed, that we've identified, that have not been funded yet. Um, this is just an overall view of where they are, how many feet they are, what the estimated cost is, roughly three point three million dollars. So where are we on our unfunded projects? Indian Trail Road Phase One, which runs from Liberty to Gribble, we've got that fully funded. Phase Two runs from Liberty to Seventy-four, Gribble to Old Monroe Road. The key there is we are working on design. We don't know the cost yet, we budgeted two point seven million. That road will not, that portion of the road will not have underground utilities. That road will not, that portion of the road will not have underground utilities. But once we get that cost, we'll bring you an updated budget for your consideration and approval. You budgeted six point five million for a public works facility. If you remember, a couple of years ago, you put five hundred thousand in. You put two million this current year. We've got two million next year. And, uh, so you see that. And then there'll be another two million due in twenty twenty-five. So we've got those, those amounts laid out for you. Once we secure the land, once we start to do the design, then we will know what the, what the cost of the building will be. Uh, sidewalk connectivity, I've talked about that. Right now, we haven't budgeted any money on that. That's about three point three million dollars. So what are the next steps? We're still on schedule. This is the presentation. This budget would not have been possible without the staff's hard work. They worked many hours. When we first started this, we were one point two million dollars in, in the hole. But the staff worked very hard, identified what they felt like they had to have versus what they could put off for another year. And we presented you a bi- balanced budget. At this point, it's your budget to work with. We do have a public hearing scheduled May twenty-third, two weeks from today. And we would ask that you approve the budget June thirteenth. As I mentioned before, what that will do is that will allow our folks in finance to do some of the necessary adjustments to get their systems ready for July first. Mr. Mayor, that's all I got, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I'd just like to say, Mike, I, I, I thank you. Thank you, uh, uh, Jim and, and staff. Been here a long time and, uh, I, I, I think this is one of the better, if not the best presentation that we have had.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it.
They, they did it. I'm just gonna talk.
On, on everything, and that's, uh, much appreciated. And as, uh, town manager just said, uh, on the next meeting, we'll have the, uh, public hearings. So folks can come out and ask questions or whatever they want to say.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This brings us up to the, uh, public comments. By addressing council, you acknowledge you have read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them. So first person up is Dan Schellenkamp. Dan, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm gonna hold off on my handout, so. First of all, I hope you're gonna say something about Mother's Day coming up. We, none of us would be here without mothers. And, and there was some talk about how good the town's citizens are in paying their taxes. I didn't know it was an option. We'll, we'll have to, we'll have to talk about that later, but, um, at the last, I was here, I think, two months ago. And you, you went into a closed session meeting about some property that you were gonna acquire. I asked you then if you're gonna do a land appraisal. I think I kinda got yes, okay, whatever. I want, I wanna ask again if you're getting a land appraisal on any property that we're fixing to spend the taxpayers' money on. I'm looking at a half acre lot. I'm gonna get an appraisal of it, not by the seller, but by a professional appraiser. I'm really signed up today to talk about the budget. I met with, uh, Mike and Jim, uh, last month, and they were very gracious with their time. They gave me ninety minutes, very, very helpful, helped me, helped me avoid a lot of mistakes, uh, when, when addressing you folks. There was a, uh, in, in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget year, we saw the graph. There was, I call it the witch's hat. You saw where all of a sudden this huge amount of money came in when the taxes were reevaluated, right? Reassessed. That, that amounted at two, two point seven five million more dollars came in that year than the prior year. And that's happened two years in a row now, cause, cause that's, that's come in. So the five point five million dollars came in. And I have to ask, you know, how did the town survive before, before that extra five point five million? Now, I've seen a ton of capital projects that are already funded. I've seen a ton of capital projects that are yet to be funded. Here's a big concern. Why are we burdening the current taxpayers with projects that are gonna last and serve the community for ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years? Okay? Why are we so in a hurry to put two million dollars aside every year for the next, last couple of years, the next couple of years for public works department? Do we need a public works department? That's not my decision. That's your decision, and the town's gonna tell you about that. But why do the current taxpayers, over a four or five year period, have to pay for the whole thing? There's a clear example of go out, get another bond. We got a triple A rating. Spread the cost of that project that's gonna serve the town for fifty years over the citizens who aren't even here yet, not just on me. I look at this and we saw, we saw just now eighteen point nine million dollars in the general fund balance right now. With thirty percent of that earmarked to be spent over the next, whatever fiscal year. That leaves fifteen million dollars flush with cash. Look back in the, that year when the, when, when we took in another two point seven five million. That was COVID year, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year. People are suffering. Inflation's going crazy. People have lost their jobs. And we took two point seven five million more dollars from our citizens because we've got some projects that are gonna last fifty years. We want to pay for them all right now? That is just wrong. That is wrong, wrong, wrong.
Dan, thank you.
And I'd love to talk more on it.
Is it, I believe it's David, uh, David, where are you? Oh, I'm, David, I know you. I didn't, hey, come on up.
David Patagameis, Carmona Court. Uh, just, I, I agree with a couple of Dan's comments about spreading that money, cause I've looked through your, uh, audit report. I'm a former CPA, so I read the whole audit report for the past year. I'm here just to comment on a couple of things. I, I label them as traffic controls. I live off of Potter Road. At the intersection of Chestnut and Potter, where Teeters is, the traffic light there, if you're coming, approaching from the south at the light, it's very difficult to make a left turn there. And, and I would think, and I know this is probably maybe a state issue, but I, I, I think I've seen some of the things where you're putting roundabouts in to try to solve these, uh, tough intersections. It's, it's very tough to make a left turn there when you're coming from the south. The, the second thing I want to comment on, and I'm seeing more of these where they have these little medians that prevent you from going into certain developments from only one way. I was at the, um, Teeters in Sun Valley, uh, which is, uh, south of the ABC Liquor Store. I'd never been to the ABC Liquor Store. So I left Teeters and I went up the road and I, my wife asked me to get a bottle of gin. I was gonna go into the ABC and you can't. So I continue up the road and I find a place to do a U-turn and I come back. And then when I left, I live going north on Potter, and I find that I can't go left there to go home. I have to again go towards Sun Valley and make another U-turn. And to me, I don't know if this is kind of an attempt at prohibition, keeping people away from the liquor store or what. But the one thing, the, the serious thing is I think that U-turns are, are dangerous things. Cause when I was in the liquor store, the guy, I said, what's going on here with the, getting in and out of here? He said, well, you just should have just went and made a U-turn. I have a big pickup truck and you could never make a U-turn around that median, and it would be very dangerous with the traffic there. And I just don't understand that. It seems that that's a, it, it, those kind of, uh, medians cause a real problem when you're forcing people to make what I consider a dangerous U-turns. So if there's anything you can do about it or follow up on that, I, I would personally appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Mr. and Ms. Woods, which, which is it? Ms. Woods, Ms. Woods, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have, since, um, Mr. McLaurin has done his, um, speech for tonight. He's just about covered everything that I wouldn't even think of, or what I was gonna say. I don't have a lot to say anyway. But, um, I've been coming in and just checking out what was going on and how things are done and everything on the projects that we have going in the city or whatever. And mind concerned, um, Sandalwood and the streets and everything. But I've been begging and crying and, um, we've been getting some service over there in the roads and everything. And that street sign where you come into Devon right there at, um, Sandalwood. It's moved where it's supposed to be. So everybody's pleased about that and everything. So, um, we see some things coming about and, um, the community is getting excited about what's going on. So we thank you all very much. And, um, we have a couple of more people coming. So we'll, you'll be seeing us again.
Thank you, Ms. Woods, for coming up here and, and saying that. Carol Lane?
Hello, I'm Carol Lane, and I also live in the Sandalwood Development. And I do appreciate, um, I've been calling now for three years over the roads being so terrible down there. And they're finally doing something about it, so that is lovely. But, and this is something probably you guys do not deal with. It's probably gonna be more directed towards the NC DOT, which I have spoken with Travis. But I'm here to speak about the island that's in front of the Sandalwood Development. We have currently three homes that the entrance, um, their driveway exits into where the island is, which poses an issue as, um, sometimes when they have like, say, Amazon or say Domino's delivering, they're out there by the road. And when you're turning in from Rogers Road, which is currently getting a little bit more congested lately with a lot of people moving into the community and stuff like that, new developments going up. It's posing an issue for you to turn into the development and have to deal with not knowing if there's somebody parked there. So you're having to fight either between a car on the road or the island in the center. I took pictures, but unfortunately, I'm sorry, I didn't print them out. I wish I would had so that you guys could actually see what I'm talking about. But it is an inconvenience when you're trying to pull in there, plus it's dangerous. So if somebody would, Travis said they're gonna go out there and actually look at it, so I'm hoping that takes place. The other thing is we're trying to, as a community, we're trying to actually clear up the area that covers the sign for our development. Their bushes have overgrown. It hasn't been maintained. We're wanting to see as a community if it's possible. We're not asking the town of Indian Trail to do anything about that. We are asking that they remove the island so that it's easier to get in and out of the development. But in front of the, um, the sign that's for our development, we'd like to take those bushes out and maybe put something like flowers, something that doesn't need a lot of maintenance. We talked about doing it ourselves as a community, but we want to make sure that removing those bushes isn't gonna pose an issue or put any of us in trouble for doing so. So we wanted to get your input on that and see if we can actually go in there, pull those bushes out, clean the area up, make sure that we can see our sign, because right now you can't see anything. And I have a picture of that too, but I haven't printed it. So, uh, maybe I can speak to somebody or we can speak to somebody afterwards, just to see if we're permitted to pull those, those bushes out and plant stuff ourselves.
Very good.
Okay.
Ms. Lane, thank you for, for, uh, your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's, that, that's all of the, uh, public comments. Now, we do have, um, council comments, so. Yes, sir, Mr. McIntyre.
Yeah, um, I generally don't do council feedback, but I'm gonna make a rare exception. Um, Mr. Schellenkamp, this is just to address you. This is not to create a dialogue, but just to address you. You mentioned in your, um, presentation here that the town was gonna have fifty million dollars left over, cause we're gonna spend forty, thirty percent of the general fund. That's actually incorrect. We will have about thirty percent remaining based on the projects we're gonna undertake because we have to manage a cash flow. What that means is when we put a road project up, we have to fund it, whether it's the state or the NC DOT, meaning the legislature or the NC DOT says we're gonna give you funding for a particular project. The town has to come up with the funds first, pay for it in its entirety, and then we have to get a rebate. Would hope that the, um, the contractor meets all the necessary requirements for, for that. So that means that we flow that money for about a year. So what the manager was alluding to, and that's why I asked him that specific question when he was doing his presentation, is that in year fiscal year twenty twenty-five, we will get down to about, uh, thirty percent remaining, meaning that we would have spent about fifteen million dollars. And until we get reimbursed, which sometimes takes a year or more, that's when we can replenish the general fund. That means that we do not necessarily have fifteen million doll, eighteen million dollars just to do anything with. The money has to be there so that we can get these projects done. So that's just a point for clarification here. You made a couple of other points about spreading the cost over the years for various buildings. As the manager alluded to, we do not have actual cost for this project. We're in the process of acquiring some of these lands. So therefore, when these projects get a final cost, um, this current council or future council will make the determination as to whether they're gonna go to the public for a general bond obligation to, in order to pay for that, spread the cost. Because of our triple A rating, we may be able to get favorable terms, although the interest rates right now are pretty high. So it's a decision that the council will make at that particular time. So thank you for your comments. The other thing I want to mention is, um, Ms. Juanita Woods, um, coming out to the town, attending the council meetings and actually getting us to get out there. I went out to, um, that particular neighbor, neighborhood, Sandalwood with the, with the town manager, Mike McLaurin. And I'll be honest with you, I was appalled at the conditions of, of the road. I've spoken to a couple of other council members of just, some of us just taking rides around some of the places in order to take a look at these and see how these are. But it's through her, her hard work and all her persistence in talking to the NC DOT that the roads are actually being paved right now. So some of the questions that you guys have after the meeting, we, we can talk a little bit. We'll talk to Brandy, talk to Mike and figure out a way to solve some of these problems. But I want to just encourage citizens to really get involved. There's six people up here, harass them, call them, send them emails and make sure they get stuff done for you. Mayor, that's all I had, sir, in terms of my feedback. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on, um, Sandalwood. In my opinion, back when the, I don't, can't remember who the contractor was, but that initial pavement was mainly just tar and gravel on top of it. And I think there was a young girl that, that, uh, was run over there. They couldn't stop the car. They slid on the gravel and, and I think she was maybe paralyzed for life. And I've, I've been appalled at the condition of that road. And I don't think that lays on anybody here in our, in our town now, but I can't believe that they allowed that developer to put that, that poor quality of a, a, a road in there. I'd also like to address the gentleman about the, uh, the right turn only, and that does go to DOT. When you've got a heavily traveled road, then, uh, they're not allowing anybody. And I got involved in a project and it was frustrating that they would not make, let us do a left turn out. Hopefully, when we get the, you know, the DOT comes along and widens Monroe Road, that's gonna do away with, uh, that type of, uh, island. But, uh, right now with the heavy traffic, that they, they will only approve a right turn in and right turn out. And because of the heavy traffic, traffic, they require nighttime only construction when they do it. So, um, just have to be patient and, uh, and hope that DOT gets on the stick and catches up on our roads. So we, we have way overburdened our highway system and it's just not called, kept up with, uh, our growth. Thank you.
Anybody else? Todd?
Uh, Ms. Wood, thanks for your comments. Uh, Carol, this is the town manager. Just give him your pictures and email and everything. And for some reason, we seem to get a better response from DOT when it comes from the town. So, yeah, yeah.
Travis has been really good. I've been talking to him for three years now, so I can honestly say.
Thank you.
And I've just been waiting on the funds.
I'm sorry, yeah, but give him, you know, that, that, he's the man. The point. Mr. Schellenkamp, thanks for coming in. The budget process, the town manager has a responsibility to put together a presentation. It was a very nice presentation. There's things in it I don't agree with, and we got public comments coming up. So it's eventually be up to council to decide whether to approve or not approve this budget. But, you know, I, I've got some things I need to go review and look at the numbers, but your comments are well received. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, very good. Well, thank you. Ms. Lane, I'd just like to say, between, uh, Mr. Hunsinger, Brandy and the town manager will do the best we can. They're, they're great to work with. And as far as the ABC store turn in, uh, David, um, we, we work on that constantly. As a matter of fact, uh, Mr. Hunsinger and I were trying to see about a matter of fact, Mr. Hunsinger and I, we're trying to see about making a left, taking that out. But we have to work through DOT to get that done. And DOT don't do things in a hurry. I think they're, I'm not saying they're slow, but they don't do things in a hurry. So we have looked at that, and we're gonna look at the cost of doing that. The problem is, we never knew they were gonna put a meeting in there to begin with. That was not there. And then there was supposed to be a shopping center there at the same time, to go up at the same time, but COVID kind of ended the bowling alley that was gonna go in there. So we're gonna work, we're working all the time at trying to make that a better and safer way to get in and out there. And I do, I sympathize with you. You do have to go down and find a place to turn around, come back. And then, of course, when you go the other way, you have to go, you know, do the same thing. But anyway, thank you for your comments.
That brings us to law enforcement. Andy?
Fortunately, I just get to stand up and look pretty tonight. I don't have anything for you. Unfortunately, Captain could not be here tonight. He had something that he had to take care of, and he is working on, I think, the presentation for you for next month, unless you guys have any questions for me. We're still trying to plug away and do the best we can.
I got a question.
That gentleman that ran off the road on his bicycle, electric bike, did he make it? Do you know?
I'm not, I think it was a younger gentleman.
That was an older gentleman that rides electric bike coming down Monroe Road?
I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
I'll find out for you then.
Appreciate it.
Andy, thank you for all your, any other questions? You guys are the best. Thank you, sir. Okay. Brings us to the, well, Todd's not here. Tell you what, guys, wanna take a five-minute break? We've been here early. Let's take a five-minute break and come back. Are you gonna try that? Let's see if we can really make it five minutes, too. That'd be great. Did we approve the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. We're back in session. Let's, can I get a motion to, on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous. That brings us to public hearings. Ms. Deese, you would come up?
Good evening, Councilor Mayor. I would like to say, for this Sandalwood neighborhood, our code enforcement officer for that side of town, Mr. Rodney Cobb, would love to see that entrance sign redone and those plantings. So we would like you guys to proceed forward. And if you need any assistance in deciding on plantings, we'll help you with that as well. Thank you. All right. So tonight is gonna be a quick one. We've got ZT 2023-0070, and this is a text amendment request to add spa as a land use. So the applicant, Mr. Gerling, is requesting this use be added because he currently has a tenant at 4017 Old Monroe Road that's operating a spa outside of the conditional use permit, which allowed this to have an office only at this location. The change in this ordinance will affect properties that are zoned neighborhood, business district, or those that may be rezoned MBD in the future. So council should be careful to consider this request and its impact townwide, not just on this property specifically. If this amendment is approved, this will allow Mr. Gerling to request a conditional rezoning. And at that time, the consideration should be only about the property specifically at 4017 Old Monroe Road. But the basic gist of this amendment is to just broaden the area of hair, nails, tanning to personal improvement services. So over time, we found that there's all sorts of self-care, whether it's eyebrow threading, eyebrows, eyelashes, permanent makeup. And so it's just easier to broaden the approach rather than to have to continue to amend the code. And here's just a quick snapshot of the permitted use chart and what that change would look like. And then the second section that would need to be amended to be consistent with this change is in the definitions section. So in summary, this is a reasonable request. It adds clarity to the UDO text, and it's consistent with the comprehensive plan goals of communicating clearly and effectively. And the requested action is before you for approval or denial, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Mr. Gerling is also present as well. Thank you.
Any questions?
Where exactly is the facility?
It is just before, if you're leaving the intersection of Indian Trail Road and Waxall Indian Trail Road, just before you hit Chestnut on the right.
Okay, so it's a house over there in front of that subdivision?
Correct. Rosemary Park.
Is it affected by widening Monroe Road?
It is being impacted. The property owner has been in negotiations with NC DOT on that as well, but not enough for it to be a total take.
Okay.
You mentioned caution. Are you referencing, you know, not just his facility, but I'm talking about townwide, concerns about massage parlors, per se?
Not necessarily. I just, I want to make sure that it's clear that this isn't just for this specific property, but it affects, you know, townwide. Now, this is probably an amendment that we would have put in. We've got quite a few amendments coming before you in the next several months, and we would have put that forward. It just so happens that we received a complaint on the business, and we have an open code enforcement case, and that garnered this request.
Any other questions?
What was the particular complaint? I'm just curious.
The complaint was stemmed from some inappropriate advertising of the business. And so at that time, planning staff took a little closer look at it and realized that this was a specific conditional use permit that only allowed for an office, like an insurance office was there previously. And so at that time, we had to cite them for that zoning violation.
I have one quick question. I wasn't gonna ask it, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. As I read through that, did we just not allow the word spa? Was that just, was that, was that, is that the whole deal, what we're talking about, or?
Basically as simple as it is, yes, sir.
We just weren't allowed to use that word. And things have changed over the years, so I guess Bob kind of opened up, like you say, nail spa, hair spa, just called something different. I read that, and that's kind of what I gathered out of it. It was just, we're adding the word spa. So anyway, if there's no other questions?
I have a question. Just, so I know, I was the one who sent, you know, some information over, because I had residents coming to me about the inappropriate ads that they were seeing. Have we looked into that regarding this to make sure that that's not, I mean, they were just worried if something like that is in our community, it's gonna hurt our community as a whole.
Right. So from a zoning perspective, we took those complaints, and we used the information that we had, that it wasn't a permitted land use. But as far as, you know, it'll be more of the sheriff's office and, you know, maybe some illegal activities that might be going on, but it would be outside of our zoning authority.
But changing it to a spa wouldn't allow something still of the nature of those advertisements, correct?
Well, I think from a zoning perspective, you can, a spa is a spa. What might go on inside that building, you know, and illegal activities, that really translates over to, you know, more of law enforcement's area and outside of zoning. So we can't, we can't say, yes, we like your spa because we think that, you know, you're gonna have high-end clientele, and no, we don't like your spa because we think that you're gonna have some inappropriate services that are gonna be offered, perhaps. So there's really no way for us to designate that, other than we do have some ideas if the CZ moves forward on this property as to, you know, requiring license, things of that nature, to maybe help tighten it up. But we are limited a little bit from the zoning perspective.
I guess it'd be a legal question, but a lot of it can be controlled by it. He just owns the building, is that correct? Or is he on the business in the building?
So the property owner is with us tonight. The business in question is a tenant of Mr. Gerling's.
Okay. So, I mean, a lot of those can be controlled by the lease, although the town doesn't get involved in the legality of the lease.
Correct, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. There's no other questions? There's no one signed up for public comments? So can I get an open and close motion?
Open and close the public hearing? I want to open the public hearing.
You want to open it?
Yes.
You want to open and close it?
Yeah, so open and close it.
There you go. Very good. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. I guess we don't need any more council deliberation. Can I get the recommended motion, please, somebody?
I mean, okay. So I would, my recommended motion is to approve ZT 2023-0070 to amend the UDO table of permitted uses to add spa as an allowed use ordinance number 385.
So you're all in favor? Unanimous. How about the recommended motion to adopt the statement of consistency?
Okay, motion to adopt the statement of consistency as read into the record by staff for petition ZT 2023-0070.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Brandy.
I'd like to just make a comment, just so that the owner of the property knows that if there is any illegal activity that goes on, no matter what you're doing, and the owner of the property knows about it, then he could actually lose the property. So it's always important, and I've got a property too, and I always try to know what's going on there, just to make sure, I don't, well, nothing's going on, and certainly I'm not gonna let it go on and lose my property. So just so you know.
Very good. That brings us to old business, which there's not any. New business, there's no new business, no discussion items, no closed session. So managers update, come right up.
You know we're out on First Avenue, you know they're making progress. I go out there a couple times a week, and I check with engineering almost daily, and they are. They've paved the driveways. They're moving forward. We're also working with the Village of Lake Park. As you know, we did that inter-local agreement to improve some of the stormwater passageways. That work is underway. Ms. Woods, thank you for having you and your neighbors here. NC DOT is paving roads, not only in her neighborhood, but across Rogers Road. When that happens, what will happen is DOT, once it's done, the paver has to put a one-year warranty on their work. So what that means is, those roads, once they pave them, will still be under state control for a period of one year, and then we will take them over. Ms. Link brought something up tonight. We'll be in touch with her on that. We have looked at the traffic island. We'll reach out to DOT to see, we'll talk to our staff to see if it makes sense to take that traffic island out. And if so, we'll talk to DOT to see if they could take it out before they pave the road. Chestnut Park Phase Two, I've already told you that, we're going to bid in June. There'll be some items, such as lighting. We probably need to go ahead and order sooner rather than later, just because of the lead time. And if there aren't any questions, I'll move into some of the items we'll cover next meeting.
No questions. Go ahead.
All right. You know about the public hearing. We've got a special proclamation. I think I mentioned this maybe to some of you. Councilmember Ambergy talked about it a while ago. Reverend Mike Whitson, his 40 years. We have been in touch with First Baptist Church of Indian Trail about doing something very special for him at the council meeting. We hope to sew all that up this week, and we'll let you know what that's gonna look like. Selection of you, July 4th grand marshal. As I mentioned earlier, we've got some new employees we'd like you to meet. These are smart people, they're good people. We're glad they're here. We want to get approval to pave that parking lot over at Crooked Creek Park that we talked about, and we'll have any kind of ARPA update that might be present at the time. And that is all that I have, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. That brings us to council comments.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Oh, thank you. I think I've said a lot. So, Mike, you and your staff, thank you very much for the presentation. I know that this is not an easy process. There's a lot of things that you have to balance going into this. However, I am very pleased that, from a council perspective, that we have a lot of capital projects in there, in particular road projects, for the next few years, that I think is gonna be very valuable for the community. I know sometimes people think that all the roads in town are maintained by the town. That is not necessarily the case, or in most cases, I think you mentioned, we have about 80 miles of road that we do manage now. As we go forward and we take over more roads, the need for a public works facility does become, I say, more urgent, because the equipment that we, and/or material that we will need to store it, we need the land, we need the building, in order to be able to continue to maintain these roads, because the number or the miles, the number of miles of road that we have in town, is gonna increase in the near future. So Adam, you know, Mike, good job in identifying that need and us planning from a financial perspective, even if it's putting money aside for, you know, some time, to be able to lessen the burden on the current and future taxpayers. With that being said, to all the mothers, stepmothers, grandmothers, aunts, you know, surrogates, you name it, Happy Mother's Day to all of you. I was raised by a very strong mother, so my mother, my wife, my grandparents, who raised me, grandmother especially, Happy Mother's Day. No man can be a man without a mother. No woman can be a woman without a mother. So thank you very much. Everybody have a wonderful weekend, and be kind to mothers, husbands, sons, uncles. Cook on Mother's Day. Give them a treat. Thank you.
Mayor, pretend barber.
Thank you. Again, like, echo what he said. Happy Mother's Day to everyone. Also like to thank all the graduates. It's graduating season for college. I got my own son graduating this Saturday, and another son graduating with a two-year, one with a four-year. This would be my sixth child that has gone to community college and done the two-year transfer program. That ought to be a state record, I think, but anyway. So, I'm so proud of all the graduates out there. Troop 276 is having an Eagle Scout car wash this Saturday. Looking in the parking lot, some of you could use it. So just letting you know. The VFW is still taking people that want to sign up for their veteran suicide awareness. It's a $22, and that is Saturday, May 27. You can contact the VFW. Also like to give a shout-out, I was able to go to a function on Saturday. We have a football team here. It's called Viper Football. I was not aware of it. But actually, these kids are after high school, and they're going to school through a program, and it's keeping kids off the street. If you got interested in looking into this, they do play at Monroe High School. And Donald Kincaid and his group is called the Union County Collegiate Athletic Program. They have football and basketball. So there was a good group, some NFL players down there, and I know some businesses in the county are helping out. So if you have an interest in looking at that, it's a great program. It's really helping out some youth here. Other than that, thanks for everybody coming out, and have a blessed evening.
Councilmember B. Holick?
I just want to thank everyone again. I heard the letter suite was wonderful. So thank you, everyone that participated. I was unable to go this time, work called, but I will definitely be at the next. Also, just wanted to say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. I hope it's a wonderful day. As Mike mentioned earlier, I went to City Vision and got lots of new ideas that I hope to share with everyone. I want y'all to know we should be very proud to be in Indian Trail. I had so many leaders from across North Carolina come up to me and say, how do y'all do it? So, I mean, I was really proud to be able to represent Indian Trail there. Thank you, everyone, for coming in and sharing, you know, your concerns. We can't do anything about it if we don't know it. So I urge y'all to continue to come in and talk to us. Other than that, everybody have a safe ride home.
Councilmember Ambergy?
Just say Mother's Day, happy to everyone. I'll be working all day, serving a bunch of mothers. God bless everyone, and I just don't want to repeat what they all said already. God bless y'all.
Councilmember Gay?
Again, like everybody, Happy Mother's Day. Again, like everybody, Happy Mother's Day. Thank you all for coming, and thanks, thanks to the staff for all your time and work on the budget. One thing that we have to do here in the town is, we have over forty thousand people, and they all have an idea of what they would like, and so we have to find some sort of a compromise, and there are a lot of things that are, things people would like to have, and so we try to listen to it all and try to work it in. And one of the important things is our sheriff's department. We don't want to end up like in Asheville where stores are being broken into and people are starting to leave, and they've got a desperate situation up there because they've defunded the police. And so you gotta have law and order, and so that's, that's one of the staples to a community. So also, we want to thank Hayden for bringing up the subject of, it's a tradition for the Lions Club and the Rotary Club to pick their grand marshal, and we swayed away from that in the past, and that's not good that we got away from it. So thank you for bringing that up, and that's kind of like one of those sacred things that the one who sponsors the parade picks the, you know, the representative. So thank you very much for keeping us in line on that one, and hope you all have a very safe trip home. Thank you.
Mayor, come.
I'd just like to thank staff and our town manager. Again, I'd like to say what an excellent job you did with the budget. Very interesting this year all the way through, and you held all of our attention, at least mine, all the way through it. So thank you for your good job. It doesn't happen overnight. I know you do spend a lot of hours in preparation of doing that, and much appreciated. Thank you. I'd like to thank the veterans and the VFW again for working in the cemetery Saturday. They do a lot more than you think. They do lots of things for the community, and it was just a pleasure to get out there with them. I did take a weed eater out there, and I don't know where it is, so I better go back and find that thing. But anyway, I was very happy to at least get out there and see them. I'd also like to, we should be very proud that Porter Ridge has the principal of the year in Union County, and Indian Trail Elementary School has the teacher of the year in her school. Says a lot about teachers. And I spent a lot of time in Indian Trail Elementary School, and I've seen how remarkable those children are. And one of the things, too, that I've got to do is the Mayor's Tree Initiative this year. I didn't miss one, not even one this year. I did last year, but I didn't this year. And the kids are very bright, they're very smart, and the teachers are working very hard to make them great. And our future's good. I'm telling you, our future's good with these children. I had a couple, I've had them ask for my autograph before, which, you know, I tried to tell them, you know, you don't need my autograph. What did I have the other day? One of them did, which was, oh, this is the best one. The one the other day asked me if I could get them out of school. If I, there was a day I could rule a day where I could get them out of school, and I had to inform them. No, I don't have that power. But I'd like to also say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. I did see, my daughter today sent me pictures as I was working, and she was with my one-year-old granddaughter, and they were at Disney World, and I showed Bobby and Abby pictures of that, and it brought tears to my eyes to see her with all the princesses and everything that they had there. So mothers, thank you. Everybody, thank you for coming, and I hope you come back again. With that being said, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Unanimous.